Now, move ahead, just take both.
Okay, thank you. All right, this evening we'd like to now bring to order the Goodyear Special Meeting for the Plant and Zoning Commission. Would you please join me in the pleasurable audience?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, united in law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Mr. Lox is not here this evening and that Bob is our new attendee. Welcome.
Thank you.
May I have any discussion regarding the minutes? Or action?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend approval of the January 17, 2007 Planting and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes.
Just second there.
We have a motion by Mr. DeBrocker and a second by Mr. Gelsner on favor.
Aye.
Aye opposed. If there are any people out there would like to have any comments, if you would please get a card and fill it out, I have a few of them up here. Anyone on the commission like to express any expertise communications?
I have a question. Bob, does our meeting with Joe Porter and Montage, does that fall under this?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Williams, yes, it would.
Okay, so Bob Coombs and I had a meeting with Joe Porter from Montage Holdings.
Okay. All righty, so we shall begin with our new business. Letter A, case 07300001, Panda Express Drive-Thru Restaurants. The applicant is ITRA Group Incorporated. Oop. I won't do that again. But yes, great time.
Don't break it, the mayor will know it's done.
Madam Chair, commission members, this is a use permit for Panda Express. Location is in the Canyon Trails Plaza, which is located about a quarter mile or so north of Van Buren Street, north of the existing Safeway Plaza. This is the commercial center where Panda Express will be locating. This is the general location for Panda, right here. Approve McDonald's is to the south on this pad, right here. And this is the current site plan configuration. The commission is familiar with this case. Back in July of '06, previous configuration, basically, the restaurant was reversed on the site. A portion of the drive-thru lane and the menu boards did face Australia Parkway, and for that reason, staff did recommend denial. The commission recommended denial in July, and the council ultimately denied it in September. Since then, applicants come back to us, work with us, and reconfigured the site. This is the current site. The menu boards and a good portion of the drive-ile are behind the building, opposite Australia Parkway. With this new configuration, staff finds that the use permit will be compatible with the other adjacent uses in the center and will not be materially detrimental to the neighborhood or public welfare. As such, we are recommending approval of this use permit. Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for questions, as is the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Was there any questions of staff?
In this picture, are the north and south elevations mislabeled? Is the one that says "south elevation" actually the north elevation?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Williams, yes, that is correct. They are reversed. There's an accompanying site plan, submittal, with this use permit, and we're addressing that with that point. They will revise these drawings.
Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to say something? Okay. Was there anyone from the public that would like to address this? I have no cards. This would be time. Okay, then I will close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve case 07-300-00001, a use permit for the Panda Express Restaurant in the Canyon Trails Development.
I'll second.
A motion from Mr. Gelsner and a second from Gabriel. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Welcome to Goodyear.
Welcome to Goodyear.
Wasn't that easy? Here we go. Okay. Well, we told you that 12 months ago, this is what we wanted, and this was boom, you would've been through.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on.
Case B 063000004, Sadea Regional Water Campus Use Permit. The applicant is RBF Consulting. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask for the staff's report.
Madam Chair, commission members, this is another use permit. This time it's for a public utility facility. It will be located in the Sadea Planetary Development. Here it will affect Camembert and Citrus Road. And this is the site plan, the conceptual site plan accompanying the use permit. What we have here basically are three tanks, built-in phases. The first, anticipated this year, 2007, for the Sadea Development. The other two tanks. Also within the site will be associated equipment, water treatment facility, pump houses, and an emergency generator. What we have is landscaping proposed along the perimeter of the site, buffering from the arterial streets and adjacent five lots that are next to this facility. To mitigate noise, all of the equipment in the site is proposed to be within a closed building. To mitigate the view of the tanks, again, the just-mentioned landscaping was used to accomplish that. One modification to this plan that staff is proposing, and that is in stipulation number six, is that the landscape buffer shown on these four lots and then this fifth lot here, staff is suggesting by stipulation that we move that interior to the site so that that buffer is not borne by these five homeowners. With issue are maintenance, installation, and basically long-term maintenance of these trees. We would like to ensure that through the long-term life of this facility that those trees are there as well. As stipulated, staff believes that this use permit can be developed in a manner that will be compatible with the adjacent uses and will not be materially detrimental to the neighborhood. With that, Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for questions, as is the other question.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. O'Connell?
Yeah, I think you answered my one question with the trees, because I was seeing it, it says "to be planted by future homeowners," so that is going to, you guys have agreed for that to be the water company to do that?
Stipulated.
Stipulated.
Madam Chair, commission members, that is a point that I know the applicant would like to address with the commission. It would be best to answer that question. Staff's recommendation is that the buffer, the trees, be located within the facility.
Okay, because that was my concern, to say, "Here, homeowner, go plant trees," seems a little onerous. And then my other question was, it says it's on this private street. Maybe this is, maybe you know this, or maybe better, the applicant, with regard to how much traffic does one of these facilities utilize coming in and out?
That would probably be an act.
Okay, then I'll save those for the applicant. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. The applicant, like to say something? And then I do have three cards here, others that would like to speak to this case.
Mr. Osborne, members of the commission, greetings. My name is Kevin Kugler with RBF Consulting, representing our client, Meritage Homes. This evening, and with us this evening is John Keenum and Brad Terry with Meritage Homes, and Mr. Brad Finkie at Arizona American Water Company, to assist in answering any questions you might have from an operational standpoint, from the water company, as well as Matt Kleisico from my office this evening. Appreciate staff's recommendation of approval this evening and are in occurrence with all the stipulations, except for the one that Stephen mentioned, stipulation number six, which we'd like the opportunity to flush out with you a little bit more detail. And as time has evolved and discussions with staff, we've gone through a lot of different iterations on the site plan, as Arizona American as well, Arizona American Water has the opportunity to identify their regional water service needs in the area. We too have, and Meritage has been more than gracious in terms of reacting and responding to their needs with configuration of the property, and we've reconfigured landscaping in different screen walls and some of the suggestions of staff, and that's been a very collaborative effort to date. With respect to the trees, to the first question with landscaping, I'd like to touch on that a little bit, that at the time that the application was put together, and we've been going through this with staff for just about a year now and working through the finer details, is that one thing that's evolved of late is the notion of trying to provide adequate screening, because we know that's something that Goodyear is sensitive to, and rightfully so, to provide a quality lifestyle decision for those lots that are immediately adjacent to the water campus facility. We've gone through a good bit of deliberations on the Meritage and Arizona American side about where's the best place to put these trees. While the final submittal suggests that, and is denoted, that the trees are going to be provided by the individual homeowners, as we've had a chance to talk about that as a team over the last couple of weeks or so, Meritage is in a position where they'd like to suggest that they will, at their expense, provide the planting, not only the planting of those, the landscaping area of those yards, but also the continued maintenance of those and providing some of the landscape and irrigation system for the continued maintenance of those particular facilities. One thing that I think is a little bit important to point out in this particular case is that these aren't the typical standard lots. These are oversized lots, and we're talking about lots with depths of 130-plus feet, where there is ample opportunity to provide that landscaping buffer on those sides of the lots, as opposed to a smaller lot that might not have that ample amount of room to provide that type of buffer. So, we think it's an important consideration. The site itself, the water campus site, is somewhat constrained. 20-foot is very difficult to lose in this case in terms of the operation and function of the site from an Arizona American operational perspective, and that is the reason why we're bringing what we think is a somewhat unique approach, where Meritage Homes is willing to step up and provide that immediate assistance, or, what's the best word, providing of the landscaping prior to the CFO being issued for those homes. As we've deliberated as a team, we know it's a difficult issue for staff. It's historically been an enforcement issue of how do we get the landscaping in prior to the CFO, and I think Meritage Homes is willing to step up to the plate and guarantee that this evening. So, with respect to the traffic, Commissioner O'Connell, the other question that I heard come up, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Finkie from Arizona American Water to properly answer that, and beyond that, Commissioner Osborne would be willing to take any questions that you have beyond that?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Kugler?
Yeah, I had a question about, you know, you apparently studied the cost to bury the tanks, and it's in the range of an extra million dollars per tank, but did you look at alternatives to sinking them, you know, five, six, eight feet, rather than burying the whole tank?
Yes, absolutely, Commissioner Williams. That's absolutely, and from a technical standpoint, the cost wasn't the only consideration. I know that the staff report touches on costs, and just like anything else, cost is a consideration, and we're not going to lie and suggest that cost isn't a consideration. However, and Mr. Finkie can explain better than I, that there's corrosive issues with steel tanks and burying them in soil that have caused problems on other tank sites and locations for a long-term maintenance and stability standpoint that has precluded them from entertaining that concept in this particular area. So, that has been studied almost ad nauseam in this particular site, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense from a long-term O&amp;M standpoint.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others?
Sure.
Would you like to now, or would these other people?
I'd like to do it now.
Okay.
I'd like to take a minute and address the commission and ask the applicant to also address some of these considerations. Okay, when I looked at this project and originally wondered, you know, why are we locating a tank farm in a residential area? And I, you know, had to pull out a big map and look at it, and I, my point is that I think we're locating, while all the concerns for mitigation of the tank farm for the residents, et cetera, are well-intentioned, I think we're, you know, looking at this from the, this is the wrong location for the tank farm. If you look to a half a mile to the east on the Abel property, the Abel property is split on a convoluted line based on the noise contours, and to the east of the noise contour line, residential housing cannot be built. Yet, an industrial facility or a tank farm would be an ideal location. I think, you know, one of the things I want to ask the applicant, or I ask the applicant to address, one, I think the land use that is proposed here for the tank farm is lowering the value of the land. I think the incremental value of the land would be better served by having either commercial on that corner or housing on that corner, and the incremental value would more than pay for the half a mile of pipes to get to this site. And if you look at the map that Arizona, this, the site where I'm proposing, or I'm suggesting they look, is still within their region and would adequately service, you know, the region one that they're looking at servicing this whole entire area for. So, as fellow commissioners, I think we really need to look at the overall use of the land. Why are we, why are we, this is not the best, the biggest and best and most valuable use of this land, and I think we need to address that. Thank you.
Madam Chair and commission members, my name is Brad Finkie. I'm the senior engineering project manager with Arizona American Water. I'd like to address the issue of the location of the water campus. As Commissioner Gelsner mentioned, the plant is located along Camembert and Citrus at the corner there, which is in a water pressure zone one, which is the blue area. This is located, water pressure zone one is based on the topography of the land, which slopes from the northwest to the southeast. Making it on Camembert is at the very top of that pressure zone, which will allow us to use gravity to make this an efficient system to provide water throughout the zone one area. Moving it more towards the east will still be in that pressure zone area, albeit we'd have to boost the water up a little bit more to get up to the top of that pressure zone one area. Also, in regards to location, when Sadea comes in and they start building homes, we need to provide water for them. We don't own the land to the east. We can't pick, hold out, and wait for that area of land to be developed and work with that developer to put a water campus there. It's more of a timing issue as well.
I beg to differ, because the Abel property to the west has a PAD on it already, and so, and the property to the east that's in the LDN zone has, does not have, you know, staff can correct me, but I don't think has any entitlements, it's still agricultural, and I'm sure that that would be, you know, they would be very happy to carve out, you know, the four or five acres that a water campus would need, especially in a zone where they can't build houses. So, you know, I just think you're, you know, I understand it's cheaper and easier, and it's easier to do it here, but you haven't convinced me that this is the right place.
Well, we take what we're given, and this is the area that, when Sadea was developed, with well-located there already, it just seemed a logical choice to take that location for that, for the water campus area. The property to the east, the Beazer, the Abel property, they pulled out of developing that right away, and they're going to delay that a year, is what they told us a while ago. So, that means, I mean, we didn't have any other land available to put this at the time.
I have a question, if you'll answer. You talked about the gravity feed for the water, which is, in all terms, engineering terms, appropriate. However, it does appear, though, you do have to do some boosting of water up to the higher elevations of zone one. So, my question to you would be, if you had the opportunity to relocate the water plant, would there be additional costs for booster pump stations in order for you to then service more of this zone because of the relocation of it?
Well, ideally, the pressure zone area, the top of it runs in a diagonal fashion along that line, it's kind of zig-zags there. So, the ideal location would be anywhere on the, along the south side of that line.
Okay.
So, further away you are, the more inefficient use of the land is going to be. So, if you were to locate along McDowell, you're pushing up against gravity. We're going to be pumping this anyway from the top, but at least we'll be able to use gravity, and it'll be a much more efficient use of the booster pump station.
And so, the location that Commissioner Gelsner is recommending by looking at your zone, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Gelsner, because you took your exhibit away, I can't quite visualize where you're recommending the site would be within the zone.
Is this page?
No, the water over here.
Yes.
For you viewers outside. So, yes, so it looks as though Commissioner Gelsner is asking that you locate that plant within the LDN, which seems to be significantly further south. So, let me just share this with you, because I think it's important that you...
Put it on the...
Yeah, put it on the elbow, maybe that'd be helpful. So, before you illustrated that along the northernmost line is the ideal location to locate the water plant because of gravity feed, which, again, you know, I agree with that, because I understand the engineering of water. However, I have to ask you, should that water farm be located down in the area by the LDN in which Commissioner Gelsner is suggesting? I'm suggesting you stay on Camembert and just go east, to the... How far east? Well, it would be right where that dot is, past the squiggle, you know, the squiggle line within their zone. Okay. So, I'm just thinking, that's the Abel property, that's in the LDN, that's land that, you know, we can't build houses on, and this is ideal, this is an ideal use of that land, and the other thing is, the city has a cost recovery mechanism for you, if you put the pipes in and the Beazer property comes in afterwards and hooks up to their, to the pipes, they're, you know, they're going to get a benefit, and there is a cost recovery mechanism so that, you know, the money, you can get the money back from them because they didn't have to put it in earlier.
Well, the problem I see with this is, we don't own any of this land out there. You know, we got to work with the developers who own the land, so we can't demand a developer to provide us, provide us this land over here and turn that into a water campus. Maybe they have plans already to make that into a commercial site. You know, we take, we take what we're given in these situations, and when the first developer comes in, we need to provide them water, and we have to work with that developer, who usually provides land for that development, and the first piece that comes in, and that's, and then it all kind of fits in after that. So, if we own this land, it'd be a different story. I completely agree.
Okay, would it be possible, though, that you spoke to the other developer about that area?
I understand that they have ideas for a commercial development in that area, so I don't know how far along they are in that.
So, I'd like to go back to my earlier question, I'm sorry. So, looking at the dot where Commissioner Gelsner has located the potential water plant, which is significantly further away from the ideal location for having gravity flow, what additional pumping capacity, just a rough estimate, would you need then to service those areas that are above the gravity line, which would typically flow down, but now you have to pump up?
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure how much of additional cost that would be, that we'd need larger pumps and be more inefficient use of those pumps, because then we're pumping up against gravity in that case.
What's the difference in elevation between those two? I mean, is there, is there a chance that you could, I guess I'm on an elevation kick tonight, is there a chance that you could go to that land and raise it six or eight feet and get what you need for gravity feed?
Well, if we raise these six or eight feet, then you have tanks on top of that. It could be a pretty ugly sight then.
Well, I understand it'd be higher, but, you know, it'd be less residential, or the residential areas would be farther away, and the heights might not be that intrusive.
I think the fall between in that mile stretch is probably more than six to eight feet, but I don't know.
Not significant.
Mr. O'Connell? Yeah, I'm going to go back to my other question. Assuming that you're in the other, the first area that you asked for, that you actually have the land for, what type of traffic flow do these type of plants entail? How much trucks do we have running out?
It would not be anything more frequent than sanitation truck driving through picking up the garbage. It'd be some chemical truck maybe once a week or so.
And is there staff on site for these, or do they just check it every...
There'll be staff coming in every day to check on everything, just driving a pickup truck as well.
And the hours of operation of these, do they run continuously, or...
Yes, they run continuously, and there'd be an operator there on site daily checking everything out.
And then my other concern, I'm still kind of concerned about the trees, how you have it set, which I do kind of like Commissioner Gelsner's idea of keep it away from the residential, because even though Meritage is saying they're going to put them in, you know, if I own lot 479 and I want to take my tree out and put desert in, you know, then my neighbors are not going to have that screening as well if I decide I want to put a pool and some cactus in. So, you know, in five years, when Meritage has built out and left, I mean, how, and I think that's more for the applicant, not you, how do we know that they're going to be able to maintain that landscaping, and the homeowner, as they sell houses, changes that? That screening could all of a sudden start getting big holes in it?
Yeah, I would like to say that it's not a standard policy to allow vegetation within a water plant site for several reasons. One, there might be future underground lines in that area. Number two, we need accessibility, might need accessibility throughout that area. And three, just the maintenance of these plants that causes an increase in time, of work time, as well as cost, which we're not in that business to do. It just causes nothing but headaches for us, and we just, it's a bad, a bad idea. And most, I think, if this was a town of Goodyear site, I don't know if there'd be trees there within the walls there or not, but... walls there or not, but it's just something that's not in our policy that we allow.
Have the, have the lots been platted where you are looking at placing your water plant? Have they already been platted?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's no opportunity then to extend the property line for the water plant? So that the trees could be sized. Okay.
Mr. Combs, would you like to say something?
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, maybe for clarity, maybe a little bit more information regards to what has been approved within the area and also on the Abel property as you described. The Development Talaverty Estates is located roughly in this area. And that is a residential community, planned area development. They have preliminary plat approval, not, have not proceeded to have final plat approval. I think in response, maybe further questions. Meritage Homes in Sadea is moving more rapidly. Beezer and Talaverty seem to be holding back. And I can't tell you why, maybe it's the market or their own choice. But Sadea and Meritage are moving quicker and their need is obviously the most imminent relative to water.
Adjacent to the east of Talaverty, there's a development that you approved in this general area. It's called Camelback 303, I think, is a planned area development. The very north portion of it in this area are two lots for commercial along Camelback. South of there are lots for industrial.
Bob, isn't there an APS lot in that area or is it across the, is that, is that across the 303?
Commissioner Gelsner, that is to the east in another development that is premier west.
Okay.
Premier west.
Right, okay.
So, that is basically in the area that Mr. Gelsner is describing. There is proof zoning for commercial on the front edge of Camelback, industrial below it. But I do know that that developer of that has submitted a clear application or a site plan for the development of that industrial property. So, they have something else in mind for that, I know. So, that's a little bit more background relative to the adjacent properties.
Thank you.
Any clarification I can provide?
Okay. Were there any other questions before I ask these other people if they'd like to speak?
I still, I'm with Commissioner Laura Towne still on the, on the trees. It seems to me like that's quite an intrusion on private property, even though Meritage is willing to maintain it. I guess my concern is, is that that level of screening, maybe, maybe some other alternatives should be provided then, rather than approaching on private property in order to provide it. I'd like to have that, something else considered then in that regard.
I can agree with you on that too. I will. Daniel O'Connor with Russell Ranch.
How do you do? My name is Dan O'Connor and I'm with Russell Ranch. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Members of the Board. I just want to thank you for serving on this board. I served on Taloson's board for 14 years. So, I know what you're going through. It's a, you know, that's right.
You remember, huh?
You know, I had good intentions, believe me. And so, I'm here because I met with Steve the other day and I'm concerned about my project. I appeared in front of this board four years ago when Shay Holmes was going to increase the density from two to the acre to, I don't know, eight to the acre or something like that. And Shay had led me to believe that they were going to comply with the area density and at the last minute they backed out. And so, I was instrumental in meeting with your board and also with the council in having that rolled back to two to the acre. And that was in July of 2003. And I think myself and the Colonel from Luke were the only ones opposing it, but the council and the mayor and this committee met and the commission met and they agreed with me. And I'm developing a project...
Could you identify your project?
Yes, my project is at, on the north side of Camelback Road. It goes up to Bethany Home Road and it goes from Citrus over to Perryville. It's 400 acres.
Okay, okay.
Russell Ranch, the jewel of the West Valley. So, that's a little picture for my project. And when I came in there and I wanted, I wanted to keep that area a low density area for quality homes and nice projects. I did Litchfield Vista Views at Dicert and just north of Camelback, just north of the Bash's Market over there, 158 acre project, one acre, half acre lots. And you know, within three years of my doing that project, we had over 10,000 homes come in within a mile and a half, two mile radius of my project. You know, the lots that D.R. Horton did to the east of my project, some of the lots were 45 by 100. I have homes that are bigger than that. Now, in that area, I worked real hard to keep the density down when Wigwam Creek, Wigwam Trails came in, Wigwam Creek came in. I was able to get the density cut from 3,800 homes to 3,000 homes. And the people in the area now thank me for doing that because there was more open space, there were more, you know, paths and recreation facilities and things like that. Now, in this area, the reason why I'm here is within 300 feet of these tanks, I have one home that's going up that is 15,000 feet under roof. And that home is a three and a half million dollar home. Right next to it, I've got a gentleman buying a lot from me that will build 12,000 square feet under roof. And then there's another one right next to that that's probably 10 or 12,000 square feet under roof. And if you go over and you look at my project, the homes start about 700, 700,000 and they go to three and a half, four million dollars in price. And so, it's, I've made a substantial investment in the area. I also work with Arizona American Water and I've tried to do everything I could to make them happy. And I put in wells for them, I ran water lines, I built a wastewater treatment plant. This was all out of my pocket, in my pocket. And so, we've made a considerable investment in the area. I've lived on, on the west side, I grew up in Avondale and I've lived on this side of town since 1944. And so, I have a presence, I live on the west side. I'm not going to go to the other side of town. The only times when I, when I left were to go to Vietnam for three and a half years and I came back. And I couldn't get a job, so I accidentally got into the development business and I've done real well. But I want to do nice projects. And I feel that the city needs to, I agree with Commissioner Gelsner, I think that's...
Gelsner.
Gelsner. Well, I feel that what he mentioned would be a good location for that because that'll allow that commercial stuff and the zoning to be developed over towards Cotton Lane. But I also feel that this is going to be an entrance into Goodyear and that would be a nice area to make a nice statement instead of a bunch of water tanks and machinery buzzing and things like that. I also took a note of the trees being on other people's property. Those trees should be in a tract and they should be maintained by the HOA. Because somebody comes along, buys those houses, they can cut the trees down and what are we going to do?
Thank you, Mr. Towne.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Sorry, I heard from Kevin here. John Keenham? You're fine, okay. Okay. Well, I'll close the public hearing and I'm going to ask for Commission action even though I, but I don't feel that we're quite ready yet. Would we like to have some discussion?
Madam Chair, I believe we have a lot of unresolved issues that, that need to be addressed before this commission actually makes a decision. Clearly, it appears as though a relocation of a water plant within the zone is not going to be feasible based on already pre-approved plans by the commission. However, there are some smaller items that probably need to be addressed such as buffering and, and tower heights that are probably going to be aesthetically displeasurable to the area. So, as a commissioner here, I'm really not ready to make any sort of recommendation on this. I would much rather have some, some more studies done on this particular site in terms of how it's sited and how this, how this site is utilized before, before taking any action. But there's other comments, I'm sure.
Anyone else, Mr. Gelsner?
Well, I think the only thing that we can agree on is nobody likes the trees in the homeowner's yard. You know, I think, you know, the first thing, I think it's an absolute necessity, it's an absolute necessity that the trees, if we go forward with it, need to be on the water campus property rather than the homeowner's yard.
Okay. Before I ask for Commission action, Mr. Coogler, would you like to say something?
Chairman Osborne, Members of the Commission, we fully appreciate that these issues aren't necessarily easy to get your arms around with respect to sensitivity, not only to the neighbors who are going to live next to them, but the high value of the homes that are, that Mr. O'Connor discussed in Russell Ranch. I may go back, if you recall some time ago, the deliberations right in this room when there was a fairly contentious APS substation that was going right at the back door, Pebble Creek. And a lot of discussion at that time incurred about, oh my gosh, what's this going to do to my property values? And while we weren't prepared to bring that level of discussion to bear this evening, you may recall that the individuals from APS at the time brought scores of literature to the table to speak to the fact how, at the end of the day, effectively, there is no, there's a negligible difference at best with regard to the impact of property values. And if you recall, he brought in examples of substations right in the middle of Paradise Valley with multi, multi-million dollar homes. Is this the most ideal site for a water campus? No, absolutely not. Is it, is water like electricity a necessary evil? Yes. Do we have other unsightly issues such as very large APS monopoles that are going to be sitting at the gateway of Sadea and these other projects? Yes. And I'd like to contend to the commission that the relative unobtrusive low scale of water tanks is really going to be minimal as compared to what you're going to see in 135 foot monopoles that are going to be traversing in around this site as well. So, I think that's additional consideration that residential, non-residential, Russell Ranch, Sadea, Talaverty, whoever, we're all collectively going to have to deal with those necessary evils. Now, working with Arizona American Water Company, some of the zonal issues that Brad had discussed, those are some of the realities that we have to deal with, with respect to elevation changes. It's not the best, it's not an easy thing, Commissioner Gelsner, to find a good location for a campus such as like this, who's going to serve the area. And we're dealing with the situation of a somewhat of a timely approach where Meritage along, we heard about Talaverty somewhat on the slow track, but Meritage Homes is looking forward to, if you've been by the property grading and pulling building permits and hope to have CFOs sometime in the summer. So, the somewhat urgent and dire nature of having water is obviously very important to remain to the situation and has been a long part of the discussion with staff, public works staff at the city and trying to nail down that, that location. So, I mean, those are a couple of things as we move forward collectively in good faith. Space wise, is it advantageous to have the landscape buffering on the residential property side? It's probably no. You know, we've deliberated that as a team. It's not the best of circumstances. We can appreciate that. I think we might have an opportunity to look at the configuration of the site and if it's an opportunity to shift a tank here or shift a tank there and we, while it's not our preferred approach, try to find a way to provide a 15 or 20 foot landscape buffer on the water tank side of the fence, if you will, is that an opportunity to get us moving forward in a positive direction this evening?
Thank you. So, what's your pleasure?
I'll like to make a comment before we make a motion. I, the arguments that I've heard tonight do not convince me that this project should be supported. Mr. Coogler brought up the APS station and I remember going through that whole argument and it wound up, the APS station was moved to a location that is not as aesthetically pleasing along Pebble Creek Parkway as it would have been if it would have been shoved into the corner between the RID canal and the electrical easement. I, I, you know, I understand from our planning manager that, you know, there are site plan development issues in the, in the commercial area that we've planned already. But, but I sure think that, that, you know, those people would be very amenable to selling that, selling some, one of those, you know, six acre, six acre parcels for a water campus that would be, you know, in an appropriate area. So, whether you solve the tree issue or not, I'm going to be voting against this.
The other commission?
Can I ask one more question? There were no other alternative sites considered? This was the only site? I mean, you selected this initially and this is the only site you pursued, studied?
There were other sites that were considered, but at the end of the day, and perhaps Brad should speak to this, Commissioner Williams, that based on the zonal differences, changes in elevation, from the corner of Citrus and Indian School and Camelback to one mile to the west, east, excuse me, to Cotton Lane, there is 30 to 32 foot change in grade. It may not look like it when you're sitting out there, I can appreciate that. But there's over 30 feet difference and that becomes, as Commissioner Bay can probably tell you from his experiences in Phoenix, it becomes a real problematic challenge for Arizona American to provide adequate service. If we had known this was going to be more of an in-depth deliberation, we would have brought more technical documentation to really support that and substantiate it in more detail. But that at the end of the day, Commissioner Williams, is a challenge that we are quite frankly up against, not only from a timing standpoint for operational needs of Arizona American, but, but also from a technical and operational standpoint of the actual system. So, while there were other sites that were entertained, to answer your question, this one became the natural best site to serve the area.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coogler. Well, it sounds to me that we can either continue this or I can ask for Commission action. What would you like to add?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we continue this case and provide American Water an opportunity to look at this site in its entirety, including the storm drain channel, and look at opportunities for them to recite these tanks and consider that these tanks are, some will be built in the future. Only one's coming out now. So, maybe present, recite this particular plant and bring back some more information back to the commission. That would be, that would be my motion to continue this case.
So, I have a motion to continue.
I'll second that. I'll support that. I just, I, like I said before, I just think this is not the right use of this land and that there are better, there are other opportunities that we, you know, that we can use. And if it, I, you know, I have to believe there's somewhere along this ridge that run, you know, the pressure line that runs from the northeast to the southwest, that there is an appropriate site that you can get the gravity to use. And maybe the pump is, maybe the water site isn't located in the city of Goodyear, but it's going to be in your zone. And I would strongly urge you to research those sites a little bit more than taking the easy way out.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? You all have it.
Madam Chair, if I may, is that a continuance until the next regular meeting?
Will that give you...
You should ask them how much time they need.
How much time would you prefer?
Next meeting.
The next, as in two weeks or actually March 7th?
March 21st, or excuse me, February 21st is next meeting and then the special meeting on March 7th.
Continue until then. February 25th. Thank you. Okay. Nexus KC 063500007, the wireless communication facility, special use. The applicant is Michael Grady of Starbridge Incorporated. Open the public hearing, ask for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission in public. As you look at this site on the overhead on Elmo, it should be familiar to most of you as there have been two other... you, as there have been two other special use permit requests that came before you within the last year for wireless communication facilities similar to what's being proposed here by Sprint Communications. But real quickly, I'll go over the location or the, some of the contextual information. Here's the, the Tuscany Falls RV storage facility, which is also adjacent to the golf cart maintenance yard. Directly to the north is, I'm having trouble handling this, is the Phase 5 portion of Palm Valley. And of course, directly to the east is a phase of the Pebble Creek Master Plan community. Okay, and now I'll refer to page ZO of the, or Z zero, however you prefer, of the attached plans for you. I believe this is the third page. And real quickly, this is Indian School, the Indian School Road arterial to the north. And this is the lease area that Sprint would be leasing from the Pebble Creek community. We're looking at about a distance of about 150-feet between Indian School Road and the lease area. And incidentally, to Cervel Road, the Cervel Road alignment is about 750-feet to the east and that's well beyond this map. What I've also included here and highlighted, what I had the applicant include here, is the existing lease areas for the Singular site, which is the northernmost leased area here in this facility, and the existing T-Mobile facility, which most of you have seen out there, which is located about 55-feet to the east of the Sprint lease area, what's being proposed. Many of you noticed the T-Mobile facility is already up, although the Singular wireless facility hasn't even come in for site plan, at the site plan stage yet. They were last left with a special use permit approval. I think they've kind of suspended some of their forthcoming projects. As I've mentioned, it's a 20-by-20 lease area. What's being proposed is a 65-foot monopole, very similar, if not exactly like the one that you've seen out there. And in the very last page, I've included, or the applicant has included elevations. And pretty simple, as you can see here, there's a equipment shelter proposed at the base of the monopole, as with most other facilities similar to this. A couple of things I should mention here is the, typically, the zoning ordinance requires that no, two, two facilities such as this be located within 1,320 feet of each other. However, the applicant has exhausted all efforts to look at other sites, other owners who are willing to lease, and having exhausted those efforts, they found that this is in fact the most suitable and is an area that would be within the, the range of the customers at which it would be serving. Citizen review meeting was scheduled for February 9th. Prior to that, a public notice was sent to the West Valley View to publish and also the citizens within 500-feet of this site were also notified. However, the February 9th meeting, there were no, no one, there was no, excuse me, there was no one in attendance. Sometimes my tongue gets two sizes too big.
It was the January 9th meeting, right?
Yeah.
I beg your pardon. Yes.
Thank you.
Don't believe what you read here. And so it was no one, nobody in attendance at that meeting. And as such, with the information I've given you, we are recommending approval based on the stipulations that you've seen before you. And with that, I will conclude my comments. Mike O'Grady, Representative Sprint Wireless, is here as well to entertain your questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
One question, please. Farhad, previously Commissioner Gelsner had asked us to look at the elevations of these particular cell towers and sort of change the elevations so that they don't all look like they were all consistent and all the same. Do you know whether or not this particular height for this, this particular tower is standard or is it in accordance, or is it higher or lower? And would that, then I guess we could ask the applicant, would they be willing to, to lower it so that it would not look like they were all the same in the area, since we have three?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bay, that advice was given to the applicant at the pre-application stage. We really left it up to them to determine what exactly would be the most appropriate height, the most suitable height, given their intent to, to serve the area. And with that, I think the applicant would be better able to address that, but.
Farhad, did you show him that picture with the three?
Yes, I can.
Please.
This was a photo simulation that the applicant had prepared. One thing to note here, and I believe this is looking west from Cervel Avenue, and I believe this is the, this one here is the existing one, if I'm correct, Mike. It's the middle one? Okay, and then this would be the Singular site. One thing to note here, however, these were all set at 65-feet. So this one here would in fact be five-feet taller. And you show, you would also take into account the angle at which this is being viewed, so there might be a little bit of.
Staggering.
Yeah. But this is the existing T-Mobile monopole and about 55-feet to the east, or the west, rather, is the Sprint's proposed monopole. So if you were to add just five-feet to that, that's basically what you would be looking at.
Yeah, you, you did note that here in your narrative on current policy. And you stated that there was a 65-foot monopole for T-Mobile and 50-feet from the proposed 70-foot monopole for, belonging to Singular. Okay, thank you.
The applicant, Mike, does this speak? Anything to say? Any questions for the applicant? I have no public speaking cards. If anyone would like to say something? Okay, then we shall close the public hearing and ask for commission action. Madam Chairman, I move that we approve number 063500007 with the listed stipulations. I have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Williams, seconds. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Thank you. Okay. Next is, thank you. Case 06700006, Cotton Lane 303 realignment, minor general plan amendments, brought to you by the City of Goodyear. We'll open the public hearing. Ask for staff report.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the next three cases that you have before you, you have the minor amendment to the general plan, you also have the Elsidro rezone and the pre-plat coming up next. All three cases are, are interrelated and if it would please the commission, I'd be happy to address all three of those in, in one presentation.
That'd be great.
All right. Thank you very much. Before you this evening is a request by BET Investments to rezone roughly 617 acres from the agricultural, light industrial and general commercial, general industrial land use designations to the final planned area development. This project is known as Elsidro. Elsidro is located, sorry. I'm sorry. Elsidro is located south of Lower Buckeye Road, north of MC85, between Cotton Lane and Citrus Road. As indicated in the staff report, there's been quite a history as to how we've gotten to this point in time. Sarah Chilton would like to address the commission and, and bring them up to speed on how we got to this point in time and the timeframe that goes along with it.
Madam Chair, commission members, my name is Sarah Chilton. I'm an assistant city attorney with the City of Goodyear. I'm appearing at the request of Stephen Cleveland, who couldn't attend tonight. He's at the city managers, stateway city managers' meeting. He asked me to appear to lend his support for this project. The property owner in this case has a long history of working with the city. I believe some of the commission members have, have even a longer history of the Elsidro property than I even understood was there. But back in October of 2002, the, I guess, the original zoning package that is culminating into, in the case that's presenting tonight was initiated September 29th in 2004. The Planning and Zoning Commission eventually recommended or approval of the request for planned area development and it was going to move forward to the city council. It was a much smaller project at that time. Shortly around the time that this was supposed to go to council, the city was working with a number of property owners in the West Goodyear area and they were working on kind of master planning residential growth out there and identifying infrastructure needed to support that growth and providing funding mechanisms to accommodate the anticipated growth. And I think that you've seen a number of the development agreements or property zoning cases come through that were part of that West Goodyear group. Elsidro basically withdrew their final PAD application and joined the West Goodyear group cooperating in that master planned area effort for residential development. Their project was further started because around the same time, the city was working with ADOT in looking at the 303 alignment. There were a number of alignments that are being considered, so the, so the city staff in an effort to kind of control the city's destiny and to avoid some of the issues that we've seen arise out in Phoenix where developments gotten ahead of the ADOT in, in acquiring right-of-way, the city sought assistance from the property owner in, of Elsidro. This put their project on hold, but they again stepped up to the plate and assisted the city out in working and really basically redoing their entire project to accommodate the alignment that city staff, I guess, had come up with as the preferred 303 alignment. They delayed this project so that we could work through issues with the, with MAG in terms of getting reimbursed. They agreed to, basically, sell right-of-way to us so that we could hold it for ADOT when it moves through, but it cut up their project pretty, pretty good, to say the least. Again, in, for the cooperation with the city, we're talking about a big chunk of property in, in terms of the right-of-way. We don't have, funding was an issue and having to pay for it upfront. The representatives of the property owner met with the mayor in a meeting and, you know, kind of, to see, his position was, we really want to do this, can you work with us in terms of maybe increased densities to, to minimize the outlay, cash outlay to the city? Can you finance it? They've come up and stepped up to the plate each and every time to accommodate what we asked. As an end result, City of Goodyear is really in the forefront in terms of regional transportation. We recently got approval from MAG that they will reimburse the city for the right-of-way, assuming, we take the risk that they, that the preferred alignment won't be where, where we set it aside, but obviously, having acquired the right-of-way and, you know, we're pretty confident they're going to come there as opposed to displace existing development. But we had to get them to agree to reimburse us based on the acquisition price of the existing uses, because now it's just a remnant piece. If they tried to, you know, condemn it and pay us for the, for the value based on the uses when they, when they finally take the property, we would be not, there's no way we would recover our, the money that we've put into it. So this was a very unusual agreement. They recently signed off on it, I think on January 31st was the final meeting. The property owner has, again, in, at our request, worked to minimize the cost. The appraised value of the property that we're employing is about $14 million. To minimize this, they brought the price down to 10, committed to working with us and we, we committed to supporting increased densities so that they could make this financially viable project. We've been working on a development agreement and again, not only was it $10 million, but financing it over a five-year period of time with interest. Because MAG wouldn't reimburse us for interest, they had their financial analysts calculate the payment stream, the ultimate payout, and so again, now it looks like we're paying about, I don't know, about $11.7 million, I think, with interest. But, you know, the, the value that we're getting for the property is, or that we're paying for the property is 10 million. I've been involved in a number of meetings with them before, with city staff. They've accommodated everything that we've asked of them. They've done, I think, an amazing job with making this a viable project. If you look at the open space and the amenities that, you know, that they're kind of do, they're doing, which is kind of unusual, putting in community swimming pools, that sort of thing, to, to give it a real community feel. And the city manager's office and, you know, the rest of us are very supportive of this project and we're hoping you will be too.
Thank you. Did anyone have a question of Sarah?
Now that we know how we got here, let's, let's talk about what we have. As Sarah stated, the participant, or the applicant is a participating member of the MOU. What I have before you here is a general plan. You just want to take a look at the Elsidro area here. This would be Citrus Lane, MC85 down here in Lower Buckeye. Rubbermaid is kind of the central focus point, that's your industrial, commercial to the north. Although it doesn't read very well on this map, this is your higher density residential, two-to-four low density residential there as well as over here. Elsidro is proposing 1,323 single-family lots on roughly 333 gross acres. And I'm just pointing out parcels two and three here, this is your multifamily town homes. Parcel five over here, this would be your 86Z lots here. The single-family residential is portions of parcel four here. And then back over to the other side along Citrus Road makes up the addition of the single-family residential. In addition to that, there are 58.2 acres of community commercial and those are located in parcels six, seven, eight, and nine, with the remainder being 119 acres, which is the rubbermaid parcel, which would be parcel number 10 there. In addition to this, Elsidro is, is proposing 22% open space or 74.5 acres. And what makes it distinctive is they have two separate trail systems. They've got one that runs along the northern border here. They've got another one that comes down on the east side of the proposed Cotton Lane that runs the length of the property over there. In these, they will have meandering sidewalks, park benches, and play areas. They also have five separate trail systems, I'm sorry, five mini-parks with amenities that include shaded ramadas, tot lots, ball courts, sand, volleyball courts, and other amenities. And as Sarah had indicated earlier, that they also have a community pool associated with the town homes up here. Now, we'd like to point out that the, that the staff report makes, makes reference to three swimming pools. And certainly the exhibit that we have here this evening shows one. It was inadvertently, the, the wrong exhibit was put into the PAD narrative. Staff does support the one. Staff does support the one community pool. For the, they were additionally, they were located here and over here. Certainly, two pools in that proximity would not be appropriate, and the Z lots are large enough to where if someone would like a water feature in the back of their yard there, it certainly would be appropriate. As Ms. Shelton had mentioned earlier, you know, a big part of this is the realignment of the 303. And with that realignment, it triggers the need for a minor general plan amendment. Now, Section 236 of the general plan outlines a specific criteria with regards to reviewing and approval of a minor amendment. I have attached that criteria to each of your staff reports and made that available for you, as well as the city's response to those. Along with not only showing the realignment of the 303, it, it leads us to redesignate two small parcels of land. With the realignment coming through here, what it does is it cuts off the northwest corner of the, of the Rubbermaid parcel, which currently holds a general industrial I-2 designation. We propose redesignating that to low-density residential with two to four dwelling units per acre. Also, right down here in the corner, you see just a little triangle of a low-density residential that now makes sense to go ahead and include that in the, the general industrial land use designation. I would like to just point out that although you see multiple alignments south of the El Cidro property here, this minor amendment is specifically this area located in between here, okay? From Lower Buckeye Road to Broadway Road, okay? Just in that area that is, is through the middle of the El Cidro project. A citizen review meeting was held on August 24th, 2006. The Arizona Department of Transportation was in attendance at that meeting. At that meeting, they presented their study area, which is basically south of Interstate 10. I don't know the exact cutoff of that, but they're looking at an area from Cotton Lane all the way to 85 to the west. That's the, that's the scope of the study area. They also talked about their timeframe, which the study is currently underway. They expect a, to identify the preferred alignment in June, July of this year, with the study being completed in September of 2007. And, and I would also say that at that meeting, although there was some discussion with the actual alignment through the El Cidro property, we had a very good turnout for that meeting, but, but the abundance of the conversation dealt with the alignment south and west of where we're actually proposing this amendment. And because of the requirements, we notified adjacent property owners in, I believe, 500-foot vicinity, so we incorporated all those folks to the south as well. We had two, actually, three citizen review meetings with the El Cidro rezoned preliminary plat, the last being September 6th of 2006. At these meetings, we had pretty good turnout at one of them and minor turnout at the other two, but area, issues such as entrances to the developed adjacent to the commercial, I'm sorry, to the county residence, lots backing up to the county residence, and setbacks adjacent to the county residence were some of the big issues that came out at those meetings. I think the applicant made a sincere effort to address those neighborhood concerns. They relocated the entrance along Lower Buckeye Road. They turned lots that were adjacent to county residence, and they provided an open-space landscape buffer next to the gentleman that had the issue with the setbacks. Other than that, there was no specific opposition to this. Before we get to the staff recommendation, I handed to each one of you a list of revised stipulations. Just need to do a little, little housekeeping with these. Folks, in, in conversations with the applicant, we, we see the need to revise several of the stipulations that are involved in the preliminary plat and the rezon as well. The number that you see at the top is the, is, the first number is the, is the rezon, the second number would be the, the preliminary plat. I've also added in bold what we are taking out, or the adjustment that we're making to that. For example, stipulation number 13 and number 17. In the original stipulation, we added the west drainage channel that is, after discussing it with engineering, that is not applicable in this case, and we simply for the revision just removed it. Stipulations 35 through 37 and 39 through 40 deal with two-story restrictions on single-family lots. These are not applicable to the multifamily, the higher-density housing, and we just added for conventional single-family residential lots to make sure that it's, it's not trying to, you know, not confused with the folks in the townhomes or the, or the Z lots. Stipulation 41 and 45 is, with regards to view fencing, with the revised stipulation, we just added some lots that are, that are subject to rear headlight intrusion based on the view fencing. We felt it would be appropriate not to have the view fencing on those specific lots to mitigate the headlight intrusion in the rear. And then the additional stipulation to the final planned area development and the preliminary plat has to do with satisfying the tenant's zoning ordinance with sound attenuation, and quite honestly, I should have included this stipulation from, it should have been standard With that, that concludes my presentation. The staff is recommending approval, subject to the stipulations that are revised and contained in your staff reports. That concludes my comments, and I think the applicant would like to address the commission as well.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to ask questions of staff?
Hi, everyone. Rick, thank you. Good presentation. Just one question is, would, are there areas or properties in here that would be classified as workforce housing?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Williams, I, I think I would defer that question to the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Gelsner?
In the last stipulation, on the revised sheet that you gave us, Rick, that talks about the sound attenuation, you talk about, you know, parcels four and five and, and two and three. My question concerns, what are we dealing, how are we dealing with parcel 1C and, and part of F? You know, even though that is not the quote-unquote concrete alignment of the 303 yet.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gelsner, I'm going to try and quote the, the ordinance word for word. I don't have it in front of me, but basically what it says, it has specific requirements if the freeway is already there.
Right.
If the freeway is not there and you can't do a sound attenuation, so you go with it, then it suggests that what you do is you build a six-foot wall along, six or eight-foot wall along that quarter, which if you look at the wall plan that's based in here, it's already there.
Okay.
All right. So it wasn't on, on the other parcels?
Okay, because, because these are townhouses and, and court homes and everything else.
Now, we, yes, sir, we would see those again with, with site plan, but the sound attenuation stipulation is still prevalent, prevalent to those areas based on the zoning ordinance. And if you look at that, I believe it's, it shows a six-foot wall in four and five and along two and three. I believe it doesn't show anything at this point.
That's fine, okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gelsner, just clarification. The reason for the stipulations is their PAD already proposes the eight-foot wall along those other parcels, but they do not in the parcels that we needed the additional stipulation for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
One final question on your revised stipulations. You, you point out exceptions to this, to the view fences for lots 78 through 80, which is apparently by a track, but when I look at lots 107, 108, and 116 through 118, they seem to be butting other lots. Could you point out those, those particular lots to me?
I'm sorry, sir, you did say 107, is it?
Uh, it says 107, 108, and 116 through 118 are exempt from the rear view fence requirements due to headlight intrusion.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bay, not headlight intrusion from the front, but headlight intrusion from the rear.
But they seem to be butting up against other lots. That's why I was asking the question. I agree with 78 through 80, but when I, maybe I'm looking at the wrong 108. There may be several, but I'm looking at 108 and 107, and they're butted up against lots 99 and 100. So I thought maybe there's some other lots I'm not seeing.
Commissioner Bay, I'll need to double check. Clearly, you're, you are correct on this instance. I think we have the wrong lot numbers.
Okay.
And I'll need to, could you have a... It's, uh, it's lots number...
107. They don't say. There's many lots, 107 and 108.
Multiple lot number.
That's, yeah. Will we have staff do that when, after?
You'll clarify which lots.
Clarify before it gets to council.
Thank you.
That'll work for me.
Any other questions of staff, though? Okay, the applicant might do.
My name is Paul Gilbert, 4800 North Scottsdale Road with the, here's Gilbert, I'm here representing the applicant. I didn't get to hear that comment. Did Gary say something pejorative about it before I got up here?
I just said, "Keep it short, you're winning."
All right. I intend to do that. There are, there are a few things, though, that need to be put on the record. We want to call to your attention. We did an assembly here. We own this property. This is not being purchased subject to, or contingent on zoning or anything else. So we put all this property together, bought Rubbermaid, bought the old El Cidro project, another project, put it together, and we were on our way, thinking we were in great shape. We were frankly devastated when we got the little notification that said, "Guess what? We're changing everything, and we're going to run that freeway right slam through the middle of your property." When we purchased the property, that, we had no idea that that was coming, and frankly, I told Steve Cleveland that I, if, if it had not been Goodyear, I wouldn't have undertaken to try to resolve what looked to me to be very challenging indeed Herculean obstacles in front of working this settlement out. But we knew that Goodyear was flexible, and we tried to be flexible as well, but we want you to know, we were very unhappy with this. And, I mean, it was a, you talk about a paradigm shift. This was just like a bomb had been thrown at us. So we've worked for over two years to put this settlement together, and there's been a lot of give and take on both sides. And I commend the City of Goodyear for being flexible and working with us, and I think my client frankly, and I don't take credit for this, although I've been part of the negotiations obviously, but I think my client has tried to do a maximum amount of flexibility as well. Now, a couple of other things I want to just briefly talk about, and that is, it would be easy for you to get the impression that since we were entitled to a little increased density, that frankly, we probably wouldn't have gotten but for some of the other things we're doing, that we just crammed it all in there and put a little plan together that just, you know, maximized everything because of what we were losing on the freeway and so on. I want you to know that that is expressly not the case, that the plan that we've got before you meets city standards, with the exception of some of the 60-foot lots, which we're entitled to change under your ordinance. You have a policy on that, but we're entitled to change that. But we, we've put together a plan that is a very good plan. This isn't a cram-down-your-throat plan. This isn't a plan that we just said, "Okay, we get this density, we're going to squeeze it all in there." This plan is very thoughtfully done, and it's a good plan, and it's a plan I'd be proud to stand and represent to you, even if we didn't have some of these extraneous conditions that are attached to it because of the freeway. A few cases in point, I hope this didn't pass you by. You require a 15% open space. We're here with 20. We didn't have to do that, but we did it because we felt it was the right thing to do. We frankly could have tried to work a little different arrangement with the schools. We didn't. We're, we've signed up with them full bore all the way. We are providing the 9.5-acre community park, community pool. We're fully putting in the amenities for these parks, so we're not skimping in the least. This will be a plan that this community can be proud of, as we are in presenting it to you here this evening. The last thing I wanted to comment on is that the, we were given these additional stipulations, and we were in agreement with them. I do want to reserve the right to discuss with the staff, perhaps in a little more detail, the last stipulation, which is called an additional stipulation to the PAD and preliminary plat. Under the original El Cidro, we were not required to do a sound attenuation wall along the freeway. That's something that I, I actually, I'm getting old with this case. I'm kidding that it's putting my kids through college, but I did the original El Cidro plan, and that was something we negotiated rather vigorously for. We're in full agreement with the requirement of the eight-foot wall in the area designated by that additional stipulation, but we just received it, and I want to reserve the right to work with the staff in a little more detail if we need to between now and the city council hearing. We believe we're in agreement with the concept of it, but since we just received it this evening, you will indulge us in not to take umbrage if we take a little different position on that stipulation at the city council level, based on what we can work out with the staff. Having said that, we are pleased to stand before you with what I think is a fine plan and represents a lot of work with, between us and obviously your staff. And I appreciate it, Rick and Sarah's presentation, and therefore, I don't intend to add anything else.
Thank you. Is there any, so, just very, I, I like, I looked through your package and everything, what you have. I just have a question, and maybe you can help clarify. It's on Exhibit D, your lotting plan, and I, I know the freeway is very tentative where it may or may not show up someday.
Right, that's right. Yeah. Even though we're reserving the space for the freeway.
Until the freeway comes, or when the freeway doesn't come, lot, or area number four, there's a row there that kind of, I think where the trail system is. Where, is that going to hook in now or later, or what's the plan for that? Because I know it kind of hits this nothing area freeway, so what's your plan, or how's that going to work?
We're showing that there, but we obviously will need some flexibility based on where the freeway's going to be located in the future.
I mean, are you planning now to kind of connect them until the freeway shows up?
Yes.
Okay.
This, the freeway is, I don't like to say this because it's very unpopular, but it is a ways off.
You think?
And we're going to be developing and building long before that freeway reaches fruition.
I just wonder if that was going to kind of plan to hook in for now until they come through. through?
Okay.
Okay, that's where it's gonna...
Yeah, we, thank you, Dave. Dave just points out that on that exhibit, we'll be building Cotton Lane, and then when the freeway comes, that will go and be replaced by the freeway, and we'll be connecting then to Cotton Lane on an interim basis, but it's the same concept that I articulated. We, we, we're not gonna, we can't sit back and wait for the freeway to come, we're gonna have to go forward with this project, which frankly is one of the reasons that we've entered into this agreement with this...
That was, that was just my only question to clarify, but I like everything else I saw.
Yeah, I can understand the confusion.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Mr. Gilbert a couple of questions.
I knew that I would get a couple.
Well, you know, time is money, I'm just hoping on the billable hours.
I thought you were gonna say on the scholarships.
Whatever. In, in looking at the lotting exhibit, Exhibit D, the proposed 303 is there, and I guess my question is, how, you know, what roads are you actually gonna build between basically Cotton Lane and, say, Parcel 1E, and as Commissioner Loretano talked about, you know, the entrance over at Parcel 4, those things? That's not clear, and I'm assuming there's gonna be some connectivity between the swath that's being kept open for proposed freeway?
Correct. Basically, as I said, we'll be building Cotton Lane, and then we'll...
Okay, you're gonna build it as a six, as a four-lane arterial standard, curbs and gutters, whatever?
Right, it, it's basically a throwaway.
Okay.
Eventual. Then we'll also be building a roadway coming down through here.
Okay, and then, and, so, so Elwood will hook up to the roadway that, where the proposed 303 is, right there, and, and Parcel 1E's the main entrance to your project will also hook up to whatever that diagonal roadway is, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. My next question is, you talked about reserving the right for additional discussion on the sound barriers, is, are, is the additional discussion of where they're located, or how high they're gonna be, or whether, or is the additional discussion whether or not we're gonna have them?
No, we've, we have agreed to put an eight-foot wall in.
Okay.
So, that, that we will agree to, I'll say that for the record.
It's just where?
Where, and frankly, the type of wall that will be put in, that's what we'll be talking about. But the eight-foot wall, and that's in our PAD booklet.
That's fine.
So, we're committed to do that.
I guess my comment is, I've been, I remember seeing El Cidro Ranch before I even became a commissioner, and, and a former commissioner is sitting in the audience, and I remember hearing him rail against it, or rail about it, a long time ago. And I just want to commend you, you guys have, you know, whoever the, you know, the new applicant is, you've stuck it out, you've assembled some interesting land, you've done some pretty darn good things with some difficult circumstances, and you have my support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one question, kind of, I know, looking at the future with the 303, the, you have stipulations in there regarding new homeowners signing off that separate, you know...
Full disclosure.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Can you tell me, though, I'm a homebuyer, I walk into your trailer, or I walk into a model home, and I look down the pretty little subdivision map, with the little monopoly board-looking pieces, am I going to see a proposed 303?
Yes, you are.
Okay, that is what I truly, you know, people don't always read what they sign.
Right, it will be, it will be there, fully disclosed, there's going to be a map there, we're going to point that out.
Pictures.
Pictures, believe me, I, I've, I've had enough experience, I'm very careful advising clients on this now, and full disclosure is the name of the game, and we will do that fully. No one will be able to say that they were not advised as to the existence of the freeway. I should say potential existence.
Great. I was one of those commissioners that I believe may have denied El Cidro twice, actually, but I'm at the point to that, the little, with your give and take, I do see a lot of good things that have come out of this, and, but I would be not doing myself justice if I didn't point out the little minor details that I don't like, and that's your monument sign. I think it's a blah.
Thank you, with all due respect to our submittal, I agree with you.
Okay.
And we, we will change that monument sign. We, we frankly, we, we were in a hurry, and when we got to the end, that was something that we just kind of hurried and did.
Images everything.
But we will put on the record, Madam Chairman, that we intend to revise that monument sign. It will have a lot more pizzazz.
Thank you, all right. If there's any other questions, we do have a speaker, Marcus Sorenson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name's Marcus Sorenson, I'm with Snow and Wilmer, our address is 1 Arizona Center, Phoenix, Arizona. I'm here today representing the Tucker family. The Tucker family properties, I'll hold this up for you here, is located just to the southwest of the El Cidro property. The property starts at Broadway on the north and extends south...
Can you zoom that in at all?
Oh, sorry. Can't see that? Sorry, I was, I was squinting pretty good there.
Get in here.
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's us.
Now, now, shall we, or again?
Broadway on the north, to the railroad on the south, and then from, from, let's see, Perryville on the west, east, just, just east, can you not see that again?
Well, you need to, you need to, if you want to show us everything, that's, there we go, okay.
Yeah, he's trying to get it close, okay. And then east, past Citrus Road, just slightly past Citrus Road. We're here basically just to, as interested stakeholders in the proposed alignment of the 303. Obviously, the, the, what has been, the, the minor plan amendment that has been before you today doesn't affect our property, what we are concerned about is the future alignments, as they will potentially affect our property. This property, we submitted a pre-application regarding this property in early fall, August, September. Our application requested an annexation, minor general plan amendment, and a rezone. In fact, I'll show you this here. If I get it all in there. So, again, this is the pre-application, we're proposing light industrial, commercial, and some residential here as well. Basically, we're here to put this on record and make sure that our client, again, like I said, we're just making sure that our client's interests are protected. I want to thank city staff for giving me a copy also of the proposed, the proposed realignment tonight, and, I'll show you that here. This realignment, like I said, we currently have no position as to how the realignment should be, should be structured, because we, we just received this tonight, but we are going to, beginning with our client and the other members of our team, in order to return some comments and any concerns and issues we may have regarding this property shortly here to city staff. So, again, we're just here tonight to put this on record and make sure that these issues are noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? Could you, again, go through your proposed alignment, which shows you go up to, just southeast of Citrus and south of Broadway? Is this, no, no, you had it on, that was...
This one here?
That's perfect.
Okay. Sorry.
Now, this, is this your property just south of Broadway that you were referring to?
This here?
Yes.
Yes, our property is Broadway all the way south to the railroad, railroad that runs right along here.
Okay, and all the way over to the pink over here?
And Perryville, all the way over to the pink, yes.
Okay, so then the alignment that you're indicating here, which is obviously different than the alignment that's on, well, slightly different possibly than the alignment that's on the proposed general plan, but however, the general plan only covers the northern part of Broadway, so the brown that you're indicating here is, is that...
That's...
Your proposal for the alignment?
Correct, this, no, correct, excuse me, this, sorry. The, the, the brown is the potential alignment, there was, there's two potential alignments here, the brown, and then this alternative B, I don't know if you can read that very well.
I, I see it, but it doesn't seem to align with what's, what's...
Yeah, I noticed that, and that's, again, we, I just received this tonight, so we're gonna have to review that and address some of these issues. Again, like I said, there's, the minor plan amendment that was presented to you tonight is still not entering into our client's property, and there's two proposed routes that are still, you know, undetermined, so that's, that's where we're sitting right now, we just want to make sure that our client's interests are noted, and, and possible issues that may arise are, are noted as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Oh, yes, sir?
I apologize, I did not answer Commissioner Williams' question about workforce housing. Would you define that term for me, and then I'll give you the answer?
Whoa, answer a question like that? Good answer, I, I, you know, I'm not sure I can, but it's, and, you have to humor me because I'm the rookie here, you know?
It's all right.
But, but I know that's a pretty common buzzword now, and, you know, this is, this is a growing community, and it's turning into a pretty upscale community, and I, I think we need to be concerned with having homes that are policemen and firefighters and teachers and some of those people can afford, and, and if, you know, basically, what, what do you envision the price range of some of these homes will be? Most of them will be over 250 to 300,000, won't they?
It, it would be very precipitous for us to try to put a price on these at this point, but if your question is workforce, if workforce housing means firefighters, policemen, teachers, the answer is yes. That is exactly what we're ca, what we're catering to in our Z-Lots and our townhomes. And the confusion we often get is that, I want to clarify, it is not Section 8 housing, it is not subsidized housing, but workforce housing, as you have defined it, is exactly what that area that I, the townhomes and the Z-Lots will provide.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Gilbert. I wanted to ask this, is Section 4, is there gonna be one homeowners' association for this entire project?
No.
No.
Because the industrial will be completely separate.
Okay, let me rephrase the question, all right? You have single-family houses in Section 4, you have the Z-Lots in Section 5, you have townhomes in Section 2 and 3, and then you have single-family houses in all of the Section, you know, 1A through F. Are there gonna be different HOAs, or is it gonna be one HOA to cover all of these types of residential housing?
The, the answer is both. We will have a master homeowners' association that will cover all the residential, then there will be sub-associations for the various components. So, there's a master association with sub-associations, that's our, that's our thinking at this point.
So, so, so in other words, we're not gonna, the people in Section 4 are not gonna, are not gonna sit there and worry about what happens in Section 1B, and they're gonna be living under something like...
That's right, this, the idea of the community park...
Right.
And those amenities are, our intent is to be available for all the residential.
Okay. I guess my last comment was, and I didn't get a chance to say that, but I wanted to say it on the record, was, I thought the townhomes are really neat, especially in the presentation, and that was just, it was the first time I was actually seen a three-story house in Goodyear, and I was kind of like, wow, this is cool.
Good, I'm, I'm delighted to hear you say that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else in the public that would like to speak to this case? Yes.
Commissioner Bay, just to follow up on the question you asked about the rear fencing, it was Parcel 1A, Lot 78 through 80, it was Parcel 1C, 116 through 118, and Parcel 4, 116 through 118 are the lots that are affected by that.
Okay, thank you, because they were hard to find with the numbers. As long as it's, that's the council, I'm happy with it.
And I'll, I'll make those adjustments on it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, one more. All right, I shall close the public hearing, and we will begin with separately each case here. For Commission action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move approval of Case 067000006, Cotton Lane 303 realignment, minor general plan amendment, as presented, along with the comments provided by staff.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. DeBrocker, and a second by Mr. Gelsner. On favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? The ayes have it. Next, action on Case 062000015, El Cidro rezoning. Oh, actually, no, officially have to open. Okay, so that's, all right, so we shall open Case 062000015, El Cidro rezoning, the applicant is BET Investments. Staff report, anything to add?
Madam Chair, one, one point of correction, please, that case number is actually 05200-00016.
Oh, is it?
And it's an earlier case, and there, there was some confusion about that, but it's correct on the, on the package, but not on our, not on our agenda.
Okay, so I just said 15?
Yes.
And it's actually, okay.
05, yeah, it was...
Okay.
Just, just a point of clarification.
Thank you. Sir, did you have anything else to add?
No additional comments, Madam Chair.
Okay, anything else from the applicants? No? From the public? No? Okay, we shall close that public hearing and ask for action, Commission action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Case 05-200-00016, rezon of approximately 606 acres for, from agriculture to light industrial, and general industrial zoning districts for the final plan.
With the added stipulations, does that adhere to...
The stipulations work with the other.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Gelsner seconds, Mr. Bay provides the motion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, case zero, open Case 065000010, El Cidro preliminary plat, staff...
No additional comments, Madam Chair.
Applicants?
Aye.
City? Okay, we, public, not city, okay, public here. Now we shall close our public hearing, Commission action? Madam Chairman, I'm...
Madam Chairman, I think that we approve zero six five zero 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 one zero with the additional stipulation.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Florentino and a second by Mr. Gay, Mr.?
Mr. Gelsner.
Mr. Mr. Baye. On favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, case G, zero five five zero 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 one one, Airport Gateway Business Center, preliminary plat. The applicant is Goodyear Airport Gateway LLC. Open the public hearing, ask for our staff reports.
Madam Chair, members of the commission? The proposed Airport Gateway Business Center is located on Litchfield Road, north of Yuma Road, um, directly west of Park Shadows, um, residential. Um, the parcel is owned light industrial and is surrounded on two sides by light industrial uses. To the south is the Christ Evangelist Lutheran Church, and just south of that is the justice facility that we're currently in. And also to note, fire station number one is located on Yuma Road, within proximity of the site. The applicant proposes subdividing the twenty-four acres into ten industrial lots. Nine of these lots range in size from one to two point seven five acres, and one of the lots is six and a, six and a half acres. The applicant anticipates a mix of standalone light industrial and office warehousing type uses, as well as possible flex industrial buildings and uses. They project a total build out of about two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand square feet of building space. Staff, if, staff recommends approval of this project, and I can take any questions at this time if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Um, yeah, I do. Um, Katie, is there any concept for any type of commercial development on, you know, Litchfield, fronting on Litchfield Road, um, versus light industrial?
There's currently, um, one application in, on Lot One for site plan, and it's a light industrial warehousing mix, but it's kinda fits in the retail side, too. It's, um, it's a construction supply company for, um, contractors. So it is a somewhat retail use, but it's not open to the public. It's for contractors, if that makes sense.
Maybe this question is better left for the applicant? Okay, well, when it's your turn, I have a last bit.
Okay, yeah, good.
Commissioner, my name is Graham Benas from the CMC Group, um, and also a, a member of Airport Gateway, um, Goodyear Airport Gateway LLC, um, and, uh, I reside at two four six one South Adams Street in Denver, Colorado, um, and appreciate the opportunity to, to speak in front of you. The, uh, obviously the lots along Litchfield are, you know, our, our primary lots that, uh, we do envision, um, a little more commercial type, type use, and the, uh, the application we do have on Lot One is for, um, it is actually a, it's a construction supply company, but it is, it is open to the public. Um, it's just that not a lot of people know about it, that it is open to the public, because mostly it's, uh, it's contractors that are, it's more of a wholesale type, type operation, but, um, that's not a, it's not a signed deal, and it's not a signed lease or anything like that, so it's just something we have, uh, what is a pre-application. Um, but we do envision that the, that users will like the, uh, the South Litch, the Litchfield Road frontage, and that, that it will be a little more commercial, rather than, um, you know, heavier industrial, which doesn't quite do with our zoning anyway, so, um, there, there may, there may be, uh, we may be before you in the, in the coming future with a PAD to, um, to expand the, the I one a little bit, to allow for a more commercial use on that Litchfield Road. But at this time, we're, we're fine with the, with the current zoning.
Can I, uh, let me ask planning manager, Mr. Queens, can, um, can we stipulate that Lot Four, Lot One, Two, and Four, um, be, you know, commercial uses are allowed on these in, in addition to industrial uses? As, and to give more flexibility and allow for, you know, what I would consider better development of this parcel?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gelsner, no. This is a preliminary plat to subdivide under the existing industrial one zoning. As the applicant indicates, that if they have a desire, or if the commission has a desire to approve commercial uses, then a rezoning application needs to occur in the public hearing to rezon the property, to expand the, the uses. The typical way to do that would be to rezon it to a PAD, uh, as, as occurred with other projects like, uh, Palm Valley Crossing, uh, where they would allow some commercial uses. But we could not do that without a form of rezoning.
Okay.
Okay, I kinda got lost in the technicality, but I would encourage you to talk to staff, because I think the commission would encourage you to think commercial along Litchfield Road.
Yes.
And I'll leave it at that.
We've, we've been encouraged to, uh, to go down that path, and that's our, uh, we have spoken with staff about that, and we are in the process of putting together our application for rezoning to a PAD.
Okay, is there any other questions of the applicant?
Fun question, on stipulation number eight, is there, have you done some work on the environmental impact?
In terms of the existing environmental conditions of the influence of the Unidynamics site, we have, and we provided that, a report to staff that we, you know, our Phase One environmental does not show that we are impacted, um, you know, negatively by the environmental conditions at the Unidynamics site, um, that, that required any further investigations. So, we're, we're clean as far as us, you know, getting financing and, and showing it to our prospective buyers, et cetera. There's, there's no further action needed on our site.
Okay, and I guess follow up on that, then, between yourself and, uh, this property and the, uh, Unidynamics, uh, former property, uh, that, that plume isn't moving your way at all? Is that correct? Is it, is that your understanding?
That's understanding, that our, that our, um, subsurface water is not impacted, and that, that, yes, it is not coming our direction. So, we've been, we've, we've done pretty thorough investigations about this based upon comments from staff saying, you know, do your homework on this, and we have, so.
I understood that it was moving, uh, northeast, in a northeasterly fashion, and then, I believe it moved a little bit toward Luke Air Force Base, so it'd be going, going northwest as well. And so, uh, you're, you're, you're kind of feeling pretty good about?
We're encouraging it to keep moving.
Well, I know between yourself and, uh, Unidynamics, uh, property, there's Adapto.
Adapto, yeah.
And so, uh, I don't think there's any problem there.
Well, and our site does wrap around, our, I believe Lot Ten does wrap around Adapto, so, Adapto is that, where the scale is shown on our drawing, that is where Adapto is. So we do have, we are creeping up, bordering onto the Unidynamics site.
All right, thank you very much.
I would just like to add that, um, I agree with Mr. Gelsner. I was on the, um, little committee for redevelopment of Litchfield Road, south of the ten, and, um, your area was an area that we did discuss, the citizens of Goodyear and other stakeholders. And, uh, I would tell you that from that group, um, the commercial, nicer landscaping, all of that would definitely be, um, something they would like. And people that live in Park Shadows or the areas across the road there, um, also were on this committee, and, and I know that they would support some, you know, more commercial, rather than industrial type of site.
We, we love commercial uses on our, for industrial.
Thank you, I just, I had to say that. All right, uh, there was anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? You, and I shall close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Uh, Madam Chair, move to approve case zero five five zero 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 one one, Airport Gateway Business Center preliminary plat with, uh, attendance, uh, fifteen stipulations.
I have a motion?
I'll second.
Second, uh, motion from Mr. DeBrocker and a second from Mr. Williams. On favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Oh, boy, the last one, okay, letter H. Amendment to our Planning and Zoning Commission Rules of Procedure. This brought upon ourselves by ourselves.
We're our own worst enemies, huh?
That's right. Shall open our public hearing.
Uh, Madam Chair, this is a follow-up from your January seventeenth meeting, where we discussed the, um, the bylaws, and discussed two specific issues and recommended changes to the bylaws. Um, direct you to, uh, let's see, Section E, um, quorum, and I don't have page numbers, I apologize, I don't see page numbers.
Gotcha.
Uh, it's about halfway through, um, the bylaws, if you're in that same, same page. Uh, this is the second one, too, but at the top I've added, um, the question was, we had an incident last year where, um, we did not have a quorum based upon four members being out, uh, more than, uh, four members being out because of illness and travel or whatever, and, um, it, it caused a hardship to some applicants, and it wasn't fair to the public to have that situation, so we talked about the use of alternate members as one, um, approach to ensuring, uh, quorum, and it was suggested by Commissioner Laurentano, which was a, was that we, um, include teleconferencing, um, or, um, as a means to get more members, uh, who cannot physically attend, but also can participate in the meetings. So I've added the provision, commissioner may attend a public meeting or work session and participate in the meeting via teleconference in the event that he or she cannot physically be present at the meeting. So we added that. Um, uh, the other item that was discussed, um, we discussed this, um, I think we started this about two years ago, was the disclosure of ex parte communications. We placed it on the, um, agenda, and at that time, we talked about whether we want to formalize this as part of our bylaws, and I think at that time, it was decided not to, but, uh, it was discussed that, well, maybe we need to institutionalize this process, and because we put it on the, on the agenda, maybe we need to put it in our bylaws, and, um, so it can live on, as commissioners and planning directors change. Um, so, um, I've added a provision on Section Three A, under meeting procedure. A member shall disclose any and all ex parte communications that he or she may have had prior to the public meeting on any case before the commission. So that would be the second item. And the way that, um, so the commission, um, would, uh, need to make a recommendation on these changes, and then, as per the bylaws, the, the, these changes are submitted to the city council, and then the changes are ratified by the city council and signed off by this, by the city clerk. So that's the procedure. And if you have any questions, I'm available for questions.
Mr. Gelsner?
I, I have a question, Harvey, but it, it's not on the two items that we, that we're changing, but it actually is on, you know, I sat here and read through these things, and I'm looking at item H, um, field trips. And I, I, I believe we advertise our field trips, but we, do we record them in the minutes of this me? Are the field trips considered a separate meeting from this meeting?
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Gelsner, they are posted, it's considered a meeting, they have to comply with the open meetings law, so it's considered a separate meeting. We do not have minutes for the field.
Okay, so all we do is post that we went on a field trip, and, and that's, and we had a field trip, that was it?
That's it, yes.
And, and it refers to this agenda? Okay, that was, that was, that was all, I, I mean, I was reading through this and wondering, okay, should we be making notes of our field trip in, in the current meeting agendas, you know, who went on the field trip and where and what? But, that's fine.
He also wanted to add that he wanted, um, three-star or four-star restaurants to be added. Did you?
No, I didn't, no, I didn't.
Oh, that's right, okay.
More Chinese, more.
Was there any other comments regarding our work here? No, okay, thank you. Any comments from the public? I assume we have to do all this for this? Guess not.
Margaret's not here, so.
Oh, I know. Should we say hi, Dave? Uh, we shall close this public hearing and ask for commission action.
Madam Chair, person, I recommend that we forward our revised rules of, rules and reg, of procedures to the city council for their, um, support.
Okay, motion?
I'll second.
And a second, Mr. Gelsner motioned, and Mr. Laurento, second, on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Do we have any staff communications? Staff?
I, I have a question. Any news on the city center?
I'll have some.
Oh, my God. That answers.
Uh, Madam Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, one of the things that go to the city center that we've been asked to do quickly is to solicit statement qualifications from, uh, qualified firms to assist in the preparation of a, what I would call, a master facilities plan, uh, relative to the northwest quadrant of the city center plan for the municipal facilities, and the hundred acres adjacent to it that the city also owns, that's identified as a community park, to develop an overall plan, uh, for those, uh, planned public facilities, city hall, library, performing arts, colleges, things of that nature, so that we can begin the process of what best goes where, how much land do they need, and how would they be reasonably located and situated? So we'll be, uh, soliciting a firm to assist the city in developing that master plan.
Um, do you envision that, that process will have a citizen, a citizen committee input in it? Or is that gonna be a stash and a professional outside firm that's gonna wind up presenting, um, their results to our commission and to the city council?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gelsner, I, I do not believe, given some time constraints on when we want to do this, and it's, and it's really not, I guess it's a basic plan.
Okay.
Of, of facilities and knowing things that we need to know to, to, we can, uh, structure a capital improvements program, uh, and do other things on a broad basis, not very specific, so I don't believe it's gonna contain a public process.
Okay, anything else?
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of announcements. Uh, next meeting is February twenty-first, um, under, um, public discussion comment. We're gonna have West Corps, Representative West Corps will be here, and they're going to unveil their site plan and, and layout for the regional mall, for the commission, for not action, just for, uh, review and input. And, um, uh, there's a PowerPoint, I believe they got a PowerPoint presentation they'll have, and so some building elevations, possibly, I'm not sure if they, hopefully they'll have some building elevations. At least they've shown us the site plan and have gone through what the mall's gonna, kinda generally look like and feel like. Um, so we're excited about that, we're working with them, been working very closely with West Corps, they're, they're moving very fast on that. Um, so this would be the work session, and then you will see the, the site plan and the building elevations for action sometime in, near after that. Um, when was that, Mar, uh, not March, was it probably April? April. April timeframe, they're, they're moving. Yeah, very fast. So the purpose, uh, the February meeting is to give them some initial comments and input. A couple other items, um, we have a special meeting, again, I guess, uh, March seventh. Uh, as you can tell, we're pretty busy with all the growth that's going on, so, uh, the other item is the annexation for the Sonoran Valley, I'll let you know where we are on that. Uh, the council did, uh, of course, a, a. The council did, of course, approve the general plan for the ninety-five square miles. We did file the map for annexing the ninety-five square miles. However, based on property owners' interest, or lack of interest, I should say, we took out, we had to take out some property, and that reduced the amount of annexation to about sixty-seven square miles. So the map has been redrawn, shows about two-thirds of the area, and that is currently being circulated, as, as we speak, probably. Anticipate all those actions coming pretty quick, and, and probably next month, and then April, the annexation, the zoning of the first phase. This week, they submitted their, I believe they submitted their preliminary PAD for, there are other ten thousand acres they have down in the Sonoran Valley, which will keep us busy for a while.
Harvey could?
Our next meeting is the public hearing for the first phase, which is their initial six hundred and ninety acres, and that'll be a final PAD. So that is moving along fairly quickly. Gary, do you have our?
I wanted to ask about the, the reduction from ninety-five miles to sixty-seven miles.
Square miles.
Square miles. That, that's a, that's a lot of property. Are we, is that BLM land that is moving out, or is that land all south of the, you know, the railroad tracks? Or, or is it a combination of properties?
Commissioner Gelsner, it's a combination of property. You have to meet three tests in annexation, it's kind of tricky. The first one was, you can't create islands.
Right.
So, so you can't, so you have to have property that's out towards areas that are not within the city after you finish your annexation. So there's little peninsulas that are sticking in and out of the annexation. And you have to have the fifty, over fifty percent of the property owners, and then fifty-one percent of assessed valuation. So you have to meet those three criteria, and so you got to do the numbers to make it work, and they've, they've done the numbers, and they can't get everybody in at this, at this, at this route. We maybe, we'll be following up and doing some initial annexations, possibly, in the future, especially one north in the area. I, I would need a map to show you, make it a little bit easier for you to follow. But the sixty-seven square miles is still pretty significant, it covers about twenty-five or twenty-six houses, existing houses down there, and over ten thousand acres that's owned by Montage.
Maybe I'm confused. The sixty, the annexation included sixty-seven square miles, or, but, but the planning area is still a ninety-five, okay, the planning area has not changed.
That's correct. We approved ninety-five square mile planning area, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And if those other areas want to come into a city, they'd have to come into Goodyear.
That's, thank you. Okay, I, the way you initially explained it, I got a little confused, like, all of a sudden it changed. Thank you.
That's the big project, and there'll probably be another big announcement here coming up, probably the end of the week, first of next week, on another, on an industrial project that's, that we've been working on, that brings some jobs to Goodyear for, it'll be nice to have, since we're doing a lot of residential and a lot of commercial, we don't have too much industrial, but this is going to be a big one, with a thousand jobs.
Okay. Yeah. Do they make lots?
Harvey, on March seventh, I will be out of town, I guess we'll get to the higher end of Friday, teleconference.
That I've always asked.
You'll be, what day?
I'll be out of town, March seventh.
March seventh?
But I'll be more than happy to teleconference here.
Okay, so Gabriel's also?
I'm going to be out of town on March seventh, and I do not think I'll be able to teleconference.
We definitely need Gabriel to teleconference.
Okay.
Is everybody else on for March seventh?
Before you leave, I'll arrange the phone numbers with, with Joe.
That'd be great.
Fantastic. Wonderful.
And they don't have phones in Afghanistan while you'll be?
I just don't know my schedule, because I'm signing up to San Jose, and if I can call, you know, if Joe gives me a phone number, I'll try to call in and see if I can do it, but I can't guarantee it.
No, it's fine.
And he doesn't have a cellphone, so.
That's true.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Are we ready for adjournments?
One question. Harvey, something's sticking in my mind, is there another report that's coming to the commission?
Another report regarding?
I'm trying to think.
Is this a trick question? Is this something I'm supposed to know?
The answer is yes, but when, we don't know.
Yeah, is there something I'm supposed to?
Is it the ball field?
Yeah, the ball field. That was, yeah, that's, that's.
March twenty-sixth?
Okay.
That's council, it's, it's March seventh.
March seventh? Sorry, I forgot about that.
That was, that's what I thought.
A rezoning, remember, we adopt, we recommended approval on the initial PAD for the Wood Corporate Campus, and didn't really contemplate baseball at the time, we didn't know whether we, we had the baseball, but now it looks like we have the baseball, obviously. So they're revising their PAD, and to meet their timeline, we'll be coming back with a revision to their PAD, March seventh.
How are we, how, how are we, how is that going to affect the Sun N P property that kind of goes down the, goes downright and splits those two, and, and has that roadway coming through that they want to build that spec building on?
It's still evolving, Commissioner. It's still moving target.
That's fine, works for me.
All the issues haven't been worked out. We haven't really even seen the plan that we're supposed to take to you, March seventh. I guess we're going to get that next Wednesday, so.
Hey, as long as we have everything, remember, Thursday night. Although that's for the Thursday morning. Okay. Um, a motion for adjourn?
Happy Valentine's.
First, nice job, Madam Chair, your first meeting as chair.
Thank you.
I move with you, Jerry.
Thank you. Second?